Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Board Work Session and Board Meeting. Today's June 26, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. We are about to start our meeting. And I am going to call the meeting to order. I'm gonna be a little different than what's on the agenda. I'm gonna call the meeting to order by having everyone stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. I'm gonna call the row of our board members, starting with District 1, Ms. Jasmine Bowles.
Present.
District 2, Mr. Mark Christmas.
Present.
District 3, Jesse Goree, that's me. District 4, Ms. Victoria Williams.
Present.
District 5, Dr. Dee Haney.
Present.
District 6, Ms. Mary Baker.
Present.
District 7, Ms. Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Joy Teller Cooper.
Present.
District 9, Mr. Benjamin Striker.
Present.
Interim Superintendent, Dr. Anthony Smith.
Present.
Attorney, Mr. Clem Doyle.
Present.
Board Liaison, Ms. Kim Blackwood. Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, Ms. Alicia Battle. And I believe that our other administrative assistant, Ms. Dawn Blalas. Present as well. Thank you. Before we get started, I want to acknowledge some individuals that are part of the family of Clayton County Public Schools. Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Sid Chapman informed us the other day about the death of Coach A.C. McCullers. He was a very well-known coach at Marlboro High School. And 3, I believe, I don't know if he's throwing the 3 for 3 championships or I'm not gonna say what the other symbol was standing for. He was a very well-known coach at Marlboro High School, had 3 basketball, girls' basketball championships. And one of his, one of the famous, I guess, players is actually the wife of Kirby Smart, who is the coach at University of Georgia. His wife was Miss Basketball, Miss Georgia Basketball. Also, one of our very supportive members of the VOP, which is the Village on Patrol, Mr. Eddie Boyd. I wanted to recognize the passing of his father, which is a U.S. Air Force retired veteran, Wayne P. Boyd, Sr. And also, we lost an art teacher at Forest Park High School, I believe, Capita Cloud. So I want us to take a moment of silent reflection for those people, please. Thank you. Thank you. And I just realized that I missed one other person. And Ms., I wanted to also extend our condolences to Ms. Al Britton, who lost her nephew earlier in the month. So let's take a moment for him as well. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Let's get on with our meeting. I'm going to read the ethics statement. "In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved." All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is board recognitions. We have one recognition tonight. Is the person here? Okay. So, board members, if you will, please step down and let us do this recognition. Thank you. All right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We have one recognition this evening for one very special gentleman. And that person is Mr. Mitch Johnson. Is Mr. Johnson in the audience? There he is. Come on up, Mr. Colonel Mitch Johnson. Come on down. I don't know why we're so unbalanced here. Come on, come on. Over here one second. Okay. Yeah, Ms., Dr. Smith said I need to refer to him as Colonel Mitch Johnson. How you doing? Shake everybody's hand here. While he's shaking everybody's hand, I want everybody to know what a special person. Everybody calls him Mitch, so I'm not, I don't wanna be disrespectful. But everybody say, hey, hey, that's Mitch. Come on down here, Ms. Williams. First of all, I'm gonna give him an A+ because during our recent graduations, Mr. Mitch Johnson had perfect attendance. He came early in the morning. He stayed late at night. And he is on our foundation board and all of those nicks, all of those nice trophies and everything that we gave out. He is, he's the reason why. He's the sponsor. Anytime we have something, he is going to be there to support us. So we're gonna recognize him this evening. Would you like to say something, Mr. Dr. Smith? Go ahead and say a few things.
Yes, we certainly do appreciate Colonel Mitch Johnson's contribution to Clayton County Public Schools in general, but more specifically as the Executive Director for the Clayton County Schools, Public Schools Foundation. He is instrumental in the reason why we're able to give 25 scholarships at all 12 high schools, help with family hardships, all kinds of stuff that that foundation does. And it has a great deal to do with Colonel Mitch Johnson.
All right. So I'm gonna read the plaque. It says, Clayton County Board of Education Outstanding Service Award, presented to Mitch Johnson in appreciation of your years of dedicated service and continued support to the students and staff of Clayton County Public Schools by the Clayton County Board of Education. Ms. Jesse Goree Chair, Mr. Benjamin Striker, Vice Chair, Ms. Mary Baker, Ms. Jasmine Bowles, Mr. Mark Christmas, Dr. Deirdre S.D. Haney, Ms. Sabrina Hill, Ms. Joy Teller Cooper, Ms. Victoria Williams, and Dr. Anthony W. Smith, Interim Superintendent. And this was supposed to have been on June the 5th, 2023. But be glad you came today, cuz it was about 200 people on that date and it was a little hot in here. So anyway, congratulations. There you go. And we're gonna, we'll hide this. So we want you to turn that around and we're gonna take a picture. Let me get that to you and you can put it in the box. Thank you. All right. We are now going to adopt the agenda. There are a few items on the agenda that we are going to actually delete. So when we, when we get down to the business agenda for action at the bottom where it says fiscal year 2024 budget, we are going to delete Item B and Item C. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with those two deletions. Ms. Hill.
Madam Chair, I ask that we adopt the agenda with the deletion of Items B and C.
All right. Mr. Christmas. All right. It's been moved improperly second that we will adopt the agenda with, with the exception of Items B and C under Business Agenda. That is 14. All right. And it is, I need two more votes, three more votes. Ms. Bowles. Thank you. And it is unanimous. All right. The next item on the agenda is public participation. That list has been handed to me and I don't see anyone that's signed up. So we will go with the executive session recommendations. And I am going to start with the executive session recommendations. At this time, we want to announce that we are going to extend the superintendent's contract of Dr. Anthony W. Smith, making him the permanent superintendent that will begin, wait a minute, child. That will begin on July the 1st of 2023 and end on June 30 of 2025. So I am making the motion that we make Dr. Anthony W. Smith the permanent superintendent with an extension of a two-year contract. I need a second. And that is Mr. Striker.
I second the motion, Madam Chair, and congratulations, Dr. Smith.
Well, it has been properly moved and seconded, and I need a vote. I'm waiting for three votes. Ms. Cooper, are you, were you asking a question or? All right. I need a vote from Mr. Christmas, Ms. Williams, and Dr. Haney. All right. We will just proceed with the meeting. Okay. Thank you. And we have a unanimous vote and we wanna congratulate. Now, one of the reasons that I went first is because even though this is effective on July the 1st and we're making some recommendations tonight, I wanted you all to realize that the superintendent was making those recommendations. So I'm just, even though it's, you know, he, he needs to wait a few more days. He's getting a little bit too happy. I'm going to use my privilege as the board chair and make a few little changes here. All right. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, colleagues, community members. I just want to express my appreciation and gratitude to this phenomenal Board of Education for having the confidence in me leading this extraordinary district over the next several years. I have assembled a phenomenal team and I think our outcomes are going to be extremely satisfactory for this board and this community. Thank you.
All right.
Members of the board, at this time, I'd like to make some recommendations. I would like for the board to consider for the principalship at Marlboro High School, Mr. Lavinat Harrell.
All right. At this time, I need a motion for the superintendent's recommendation of Mr. Lavinat Harrell as the principal at Marlboro High School. Ms. Cooper.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Mr. Lavinat Harrell as the principal of Marlboro High School.
I need a second. Mr. Striker.
I second, I second the motion, Madam Chair.
It's been moved improperly second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Please vote. And it is a unanimous vote. Mr. Harrell. All right. Make sure you stick around. We need a picture at the end. Okay?
Thank you, board members. Also, I would like for the board to consider for the position of principal at Eddie White Middle School, Dr. Mickey Harris Sims.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith. At this time, I need a motion for the superintendent's recommendation of Dr. Mickey Harris Sims as principal of Eddie White Middle Academy. Ms. Bowles.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Dr. Mickey Harris Sims to become the permanent principal at Eddie White Middle Academy.
All right. I need a second. Ms. Baker.
I second that.
All right. It's been moved improperly second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Please vote. All right. We have a 9-0 vote, unanimous.
Congratulations. I would also like for the board to consider for principal of Sequoia Middle School, Mr. Jamari Hartsfield.
Board members, I need a motion for the superintendent's recommendation of Mr. Jamari Hartsfield as the principal at Sequoia Middle School. Ms. Williams.
I move that we accept the recommendation.
All right. I need a second. Ms. Hill.
I second that, Madam Chair.
All right. It's been moved improperly second that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Please vote. All right. It's a unanimous vote. Mr. Hartsfield.
Congratulations. Also, board members, I would like for you to consider for the position of Assistant Principal at Kemp Elementary School, Mrs. Jacqueline Presley Wilson.
Board members, I need a motion, I need a motion for the recommendation of Ms. Jacqueline Presley Wilson as the Assistant Principal at Kemp Elementary School. Dr. Haney.
Madam Chair, I do make the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for Ms. Jacqueline Presley Wilson to become the Assistant Principal over at Kemp Elementary School.
All right. Mr. Christmas.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly second to accept the superintendent's recommendation. All right. And it is a unanimous vote. Ms. Jacqueline Presley Wilson. All right. Is she in here? Is Ms. Presley, oh, okay. It was so many tall people, we couldn't see you. All right.
I appreciate the board voting on those recommendations, but I would also like to let the board be aware that we've elected some individuals as acting principal I'd like to introduce to the board and to the community. We would like for Mr. Cornelius Port to stand and be recognized as the Assistant Principal at Munnies Mill High School, going as the Acting Principal at Lovejoy High School, Dr. Cornelius Port.
Mr. Port, okay.
Also, we would like to introduce to the board Assistant Principal at Forest Park to Acting Principal at Riverdale Middle School, Mr. Cedric Coleman.
All right. Mr. Coleman.
Also, we would like to introduce to the board Assistant Principal at Jonesboro, Jonesboro High School to Acting Principal at Rex Mill Middle School, Mr. Jared Proctor. Congratulations, members of the board, those of my recommendations and acknowledgements of acting principals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have one other matter that we need to, to vote on. We had gone into an executive session for personnel matters as well as a legal matter. So I need a motion. Well, I'll just make the motion. In the matter of Crystal Lamb, I move to approve the litigation items as approved in executive session. I'm making the motion. I need a second. Mr. Striker.
I move that we accept your motion.
Is that a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So we have a second. Now, I see a lot of lights at the top. Mr. Christmas, do you have a question? Okay. Ms. Williams, do you have a question? Okay. Oh, well, I have a second. I made, I just made the motion. Okay. Ms. Hill. Okay. I need a vote, please. I need you all to vote. All right. And it is a unanimous vote. Thank you all. I think we covered everything from executive session. That is correct. Okay. All right. The next item that I see on the agenda. Oh, wait a minute. Let's, let's, I was getting ready to hear Mr. Striker, but let's go ahead and take our pictures. Could all of those people that just got those nice jobs, could you all come and join the board? Now, after they take the picture, all the people, all the family and friends, and we want you to expeditiously to exit the boardroom. All right. All those new principals, all of the new principals, we're gonna pretend like we are, the bell has rung and we're clearing the highways. We need you to proceed expeditiously to your destination. Thank you all. All right. I believe it's up to you now.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair. Board members, district administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements. The last day for 225 day employees is Thursday, June 29. Friday, June 30 will be a non-work day. All school facilities and district offices will be closed. The district will be closed in observation of summer break on Monday, July 30 through Friday, July 7. All schools and offices will return to their existing schedule of operation on Monday, July 10. The Clayton County Board of Education has tentatively scheduled three public hearing, hearings to discuss the district's 2023 military. The first public hearing has been set for Monday, July 17 at 6:00 PM. The remaining public hearings have been scheduled for Monday, July 31 at 11:00 AM and 6:00 PM. All meetings will take place in the boardroom of the district's administration complex in Jonesboro. Our teachers, our teacher orientation will begin Monday, July 17, and continue through Friday, July 21. Sessions will be held at the Professional Learning Center from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM daily. Pre-planning for the district's teachers and other instructional employees will begin on Monday, July 24 and continue through Tuesday. and continue through Tuesday, August 1st. The district will hold Blueprint to Success, its annual welcome-back celebration on Saturday, July 29th, at Drew High School and Riverdale Elementary School. The celebration will begin at 10:00 a.m. and end at 1:00 p.m. The 2023-2024 Open House Day for Clayton County Public Schools have been set for Monday, July 31st. Sessions will be as follow: elementary schools at 1:00 p.m., middle schools at 3:00 p.m., and high schools at 5:00 p.m. The July Board Work Session is scheduled for Monday, July 31st at 6:00 p.m. This meeting will be held in the boardroom of the School Administration Complex. The first day of the 2023-2024 school year for students will be Wednesday, August 2nd. The district will hold its annual summer graduation ceremony on Thursday, August 3rd, at the district's Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro. The ceremony will begin at 6:30 p.m. The first board meeting for the 2023-2024 school year is scheduled for Monday, August 7th at 6:00 p.m. The meeting will be held in the boardroom at the administration complex. Madam Chair, that concludes tonight's announcements.
All right, we also will have a called board meeting when we return on July 12th at 6:00 p.m., only for personnel matters. All right, the next item on the agenda are the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the board work session, May 30th, 2023. I have already sent some additions to it, and they were corrected in your packet. Are there any other corrections or additions that we need to add to the board work session minutes from May 30th? Seeing none, we will accept them as presented. We also have the minutes from our board meeting on June 5th, 2023. And I'm checking, do we have any additions, deletions? All right, seeing none, we will accept them as presented. We will move on to updates to the board. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Madam Chair, we will have updates from the Teaching and Learning Department by Dr. Delphia Young.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Gori, and Mr. Vice Chair Striker, members of the board, and Superintendent Smith, and the community. Tonight, we present to you a brief update on our summer school programs, our school choice, and a little bit information about our Georgia Milestone outcome. Before I get started, I want to bring up two of our students, Ms. Lester and Ms. Bryant, who will share with you their experiences as the student workers as the intern at STEM Camp, Ms. Lester, and our student tutor in our summer enrichment academy working with our elementary and middle school students, Ms. Bryant. Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, board members, and Superintendent Smith. My name's Cory Bryant. I am a rising 10th grader at Jonesboro High School. I have had the opportunity over the past few weeks to take part in the Clayton County Growing Our Own Summer Program. The best parts of the program have been being a contracted vendor with CCPS, participated in program training, grown relationships with the students, being exposed to the teaching world, and of course, the money. My experiences of working with students has really helped me to see what our amazing teachers endure and what it really takes to work with students who may have academic and behavioral challenges. These experiences will also benefit as part of the application process when I begin to apply to college later this year. I am truly grateful for this opportunity, and I hope that we continue this program throughout the years. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Madam Chairman, Ms. Gori, all of the board members, cabinet members, and visitors. My name is Jada Lester, and I attend Forest Park High School. This year, I'll be entering the 12th grade. I decided to do an internship with Southern Regional Medical Center because as I prepare for college next year, I am undecided about whether I want to go into the criminal justice or healthcare field. This is the reason why I chose to participate in this particular internship. I really enjoyed participating in this internship because my peers and I were able to go to four different departments for two days each. We went to the pharmacy, radiology, laboratory, and respiratory departments. I learned so much during that short time, I never realized that those different departments existed within a hospital. I loved the laboratory department the most because the supervisor of the microbiology department was extremely hands-on, and she allowed me to work with specimens to see how they would grow. She gave us step-by-step directions on how to go through the process of testing samples. She also allowed us to prepare slides of various germs to observe under the microscopes. There were many times where I wasn't sure exactly what I was looking at, but the supervisor did a really great job helping me to understand by explaining in detail what we were doing, looking at under the microscope, and the reason for using such equipment to identify different viruses. I want to thank you for offering me the opportunity of a lifetime because this was something that I will never forget. Although some departments were not as interesting to me, the departments that were very interesting really taught me a lot. I learned so much in a short period of time, it was almost hard to remember. I will highly recommend this program for many more years to come. I feel like people my age and younger deserve to be exposed to an environment like this because this isn't something that you're exposed to every day. I am sad that this program had to come to an end very fast, but it was fun while it lasted. I wish you all the best and hope you have an amazing rest of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lester and Ms. Bryant, Ms. Lester and Ms. Bryant. Now, I know I know Ms. Bryant, but I'm thinking I might know Ms. Lester as well. Ms. Bryant, can you tell us a little something else about yourself that the board should know?
About myself?
Yes, about you.
I mean, I want to be a lawyer when I get older. I want to go to Howard, go to law school. You guys probably know my mom.
Well, who is your mom? I think that's what I'm trying to find out. Who's your mom?
Ms. Bryant, Ms. Nika Bryant.
Ms. Nika Bryant. Hey, Ms. Bryant. See, it's been a long time. I used to be your mom's supervisor at one point. Okay, I just wanted you to acknowledge that. I see Mr. Striker's lighter on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a note that in reading many business books and following Warren Buffett, one of the secrets to his success is that he said that you should invest in things that you're going to use in yourself. And I want to give a shout-out to my principal, Ms. Bryant, because not only do you help move our community and district forward, but you've trusted our system strong enough to put your fantastic daughter in our system. That's investing in yourself.
Right.
And your son, and your son.
And her son. Okay, Ms. Lester, I'm thinking that, but no, tell me, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Right now, I am stuck between medical school and criminal law and justice because I want to be a detective, or I want to major somewhere in the medical field. My mother, she teaches at Forest Park High School. Yeah, she's a teacher.
All right. I was trying to look and see, I thought this was, we had another.
I told my mom that you look very similar.
So we're glad to see some products of Clayton County Public Schools and their children working for us. Now, since Dr. Young brought you all up, and some of you, I said something about how you hope that this will continue. I'm just going to go ahead and put my little spiel out right now. I had a conversation with Ms. Billinsley today. We met with our finance to ask about our finances. And I believe that we have a lot of CARES money. And what I would like to see happen is, I know that in your report, you all said there were maybe about 82 of these students. And I know that you all actually had a goal of about 200. So I'm going to, I don't know if I can make a motion, but I'm going to make a suggestion that those 82 people that we employed this summer, that we continue to employ them throughout the school year and utilize some of our CARES money. So that, and if you all can find it in your schedule or whatever to do some tutorial services or whatever you did, I think you all had some training, I would like for you all to do that. Because Ms. Williams has suggested this, Dr. D had talked about it, Ms. Hill is on our committee, our academic committee, and I would really like for you all to meet that goal that you had of 200 students because this will be a paid employment. But I also think that one of the components that we need to add to our diploma, the attainment of your diploma, also should be maybe even some community service. And even though we're paying you, you need to be paid. I'm sure you all learned that. It's not easy being a teacher. So I think this will help us with our test scores, and it's a great way to, instead of looking on the news and seeing students with weapons in their hand, we see students with books in their hand, working to make this a... To do what, Dr. Smith? To build a better tomorrow today. Thank you. All right.
Yes, Ms. Gori, board members, we are going to continue with our program. We have plans in place to identify up to 200 students. We're working with our CTAE program and other programs to identify students and get them trained to work with us as interns and tutors. We will actually have some plans in place very soon, and we'll be able to share those with our board members. And so again, thank you, parents. Thank you very much, and thank you, ladies, for presenting to us today. It is our intention to bring more students to the board during our updates from teaching and learning and strategic improvement. So look forward to seeing additional students. All right, just a quick, very quick update on some numbers for our summer school. You already have that information in a packet, and you can see our different programs that we have. We're going to continue with these programs, continue to look at them, and how we can increase our enrollment for 2024. We did experience some increases from 2002 in our summer enrichment academy, and I shared that information with you via the email. If you have any questions, please ask them. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions? All right, I don't have any questions, but I do want to commend you for the program that you all put together. We definitely saw an increase in the numbers, which was great. I'm gonna make a suggestion, though, in that mainly our high school students were online. I'm hoping that next year that we can have some of our high school students in person. And I wish that we would look at some acceleration for our high school students. I know that we have like our dual enrollment program, but I know when I left junior high school, I was able to take a math course prior to actually going to high school. So I wish we would offer some coursework as well for some of our students that want to get ahead. And especially for our, we have some students that may not be on grade level as far as reading is concerned. I really wish that we could offer some type of a reading program for our struggling middle and high school students to work on, and not necessarily just have everything online because nothing replaces a teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Gori, for that and take that on advisement. And just to share with you, in our Advanced Learning Academy, we had middle schools and high school students to participate in that program. We will continue to look for opportunities to expand these programs that best meet the needs of our students. The next presentation comes from Dr. Monica Wiley, who's going to share with you some brief information about school choice.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Smith. Sounds good, doesn't it?
Yes.
Today, I want to talk to you about school choice. And I know you have a copy of this presentation, but there are some things I want to highlight so the community will know what's going on with school choice. So first and foremost, school choice gives parents the opportunity to decide their school or their program. And the funding will follow the student. So in Clayton County Public Schools, we have charter schools, we have pre-kindergarten student hardship transfers, we have the House Bill 251, Senate Bill 10. We also have virtual programs, and you know, we have magnet programs. All of those programs are part of our school choice options for our students. And with that, I promised you last year that we were going to start transitioning to assisting some of our other magnet programs and really giving them the support they need in order to flourish. And I am holding true to that promise. We met first with Drew High School and sat down with the leadership team and talked to the leadership team there to say, hey, what do you want to do with your magnet program? What is your vision for your program? And the leadership team there said, we want to continue the medical sciences, but we also want to add public safety, which we already know that Drew High School does a phenomenal job with public safety for their current neighborhood students, if you will. So now they want to open their doors for other students who may want to participate in that program. So we are now at the phase of looking at the curriculum, figuring out what we need to do at the district level to support that school, to make sure that they are successful. And that is Charles R. Drew High School. The next school that we met with, we met with this school twice. First, it was just with the principal to determine the principal's vision for that particular magnet program. And then Dr. Pitts and I met with not only the principal, but the aviation teacher, to talk about their vision for the aviation program. And their vision is, of course, to continue the program, but to strengthen it a little, to make sure that the students from North Clayton Middle School who are participating in their drone program, and we all know across the district that North Clayton Middle School has a stellar drone program. So what North Clayton High School wants to do is to offer the fundamentals of aerospace and then move into flight operations with their unmanned systems. And that will give the students at North Clayton Middle School an opportunity to continue their learning and not just have a club, but to actually have the courses that could lead into certification. So what we are doing now is trying to revamp the curriculum, and that's something the principal is doing, working with her team in order to revamp the curriculum. And this is a great time to look at North Clayton's high school's program to see how the district can support. Because as you are aware, North Clayton High School will have a new facility. And so I briefly met with Rony Joseph or talked to him last week about making sure that the principal and the aviation teacher is engaged in the conversations prior to the design, the final design of the program to ensure the facility meets the needs of our drone program at North Clayton High School. So right now, we're in the process, what we're doing right now is waiting on the aviation teacher and the principal to get back with us about the materials and the supplies that they need in order to be successful for this upcoming school year, so that we can ensure that our students are successful. One thing that one of the board members last year talked to me about was our targeted recruitment. So we are going to up what we're doing with our targeted recruitment. We are not only going to target Hispanic students for our magnet programs, but we are targeting our white students and our Asian students as well to ensure that all of our students are getting the opportunity to enroll into our magnet programs. But I have to caution everyone that we cannot enroll students based on their race. That is an OCR violation. The only thing that we can do is to conduct targeted recruitment to get the word out there about our programs and to ensure all of our families in our community they are aware of our programs. And I'm pretty sure some of you, we have attended some of your events and set up tables to make sure that we're getting the word out there. And then what we're going to do this year is we're going to really look at the achievement. is we're going to really look at the achievement and the data, demographic data of our programs to kind of gauge the effectiveness of the program. So we are in the process of cleaning the data right now in Infinite Campus so that we can pull true data to determine whether or not our programs are effective. And then we're going to add, we're going to add three, at least three community events across the district in all areas to get our community involved and engaged in determining, what programs do you want to see? Instead of us telling the various schools or the schools telling us what they need, we need our community and our students and our stakeholders, our workforce and our colleges to let us know what we need to offer and what they want from us. And with that, I wanted to talk to you about the IB program. The, the decision to postpone the IB programs at the school came in conjunction with the leaders in the facility. There's a lot going on in those schools because two of them are identified schools. And with the processes and procedures that's in place for our identified schools, it's difficult right now to really fully implement an IB program when you are concerned with student achievement, you are concerned with the culture and the climate of the building, and you are concerned with ensuring our teachers are actually teaching Tier One instruction. So we're not going to suspend, we're not going to eliminate, we're going to backtrack. We're going to take this time, train our teachers at those schools, make sure that they have the content knowledge, make sure that they understand the tenets of IB, and to ensure that our students are not the ones that are suffering because we are just throwing any and everything at our schools and our leaders at this time. Because it is a lot with our identified schools and that alone takes a lot of time. So we want to make sure that we at least listen to our principals because we are not making this decision. We met with every single principal that oversees IB and that was the decision of the leaders. We said, what do you want to do? What do you want us to do in order to support you? So this, this is how we're going to support and to ensure that their staff members get the support that they need through professional development, professional learning. We have an abundance of activities that's already planned for this upcoming school year. As you can see from the calendar, we get the ball rolling in August. And then we do not stop until May. And we are going to add throughout the year different events as the data deems appropriate. And as you all plan your events, we will be contacting you as well when we see the notices come out saying, hey, can we set up a table? But right now, you don't know your events, so I can't put them on the calendar until you schedule. And we will be there to represent school choice and to let the, the community know what's going on out there. And then on May ninth, I would like for you to write that on your calendar. May ninth, 2024, we are going to have a partner appreciation luncheon for all of our partners with school choice because our goal is to increase our partners this year. And I think we're doing a phenomenal job already this summer. So with that, are there any questions?
Ms. Baker.
One of the things that was brought to my attention through the council was getting the information out about, about these choice programs. You know, a lot of my people went through Robert's and they didn't really know that Jonesboro had things versus Stillwell. So they suggested, and I'm agreeing with them, across the top of our web, webpage, maybe we could put a tab that shows school choice and then have a listing of each school and the things that they offer. Because that's not only good for the students that we currently have, but people moving into the district, since we do have deadlines, that they would know, you know, juvenile justice or arts or culinary or whatever, you know, and just have it real easy to find.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll talk to Ms. Dawkins and Ms. Rice to actually put something on the homepage of the school system that takes them directly to the school choice website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, as Ms. Baker alluded to, the website, the website is not very friendly at all. You actually can't find anything on the website. But one thing that I did find on the website that I was surprised to see was, and you all just sent us this little flyer. But I was unaware of the fact that we changed Morrow High School to a, let me see, what did you all say we done? We have, it says that one school will expand the STEM magnet program to a whole school magnet program. But we weren't aware that that was happening. Morrow High School, STEM, aeronautical sciences, computer sciences, engineering and pharmacy. But I think the last time when we decided that we were going to do that, I thought that we were going, when we did that at MD Roberts, I thought that we had a conversation with the community so that everyone knows that. Because I'm not sure what that means for students. Does that mean that anybody, everybody that goes to Morrow, those are the areas that you must select? If, if we're moving that way, then I think that is something that the board should know and a conversation that we need to have in the community. Now, the other thing that I found is I'm looking on the website for school choice. You just mentioned North Clayton and aviation and drone. And I'm, I'm gonna say this, I'm not gonna be real happy if we're just watered down to drone. Because as, as you can recall, way back in probably 2012, I believe, when Ms. Jackson became the superintendent, that we started out with a program for, at Morrow High School and Lovejoy. The programs were really similar, okay? But what I, what I found interesting is when I click on the tab, I don't see anything at all listed for Lovejoy High School. And I know that Lovejoy had a really good program there. So I think that we really need to go back and make our website a little bit more friendly. I think we need to make sure that we list all of the programs that are at all of the schools. And like I said, if we're doing this for Morrow, I just don't remember having a conversation. Now, as far as the IB program, I'm gonna say this, as I said on Saturday after we listened to the audit. One of my concerns about all of these choice schools is that I feel like you're, you're talking about recruiting, trying to get more certain nationalities. But I want to get more of students, period.
Correct.
Because right now, we're keeping kids out of these programs. Pretty much what we're saying is the only people we're letting in these choice programs are kids that have a 3.0 and above. That is totally unfair to me. When we had the IB program before, when Dr. Pulliam initiated, we had IB at the north end of the county, at North Clayton, and at Lovejoy. We didn't even have a requirement for what the GPA had to be. It was simply, if this is what you wanted, if you wanted to try this program, try it. And, you know, and so we have students that even, that may have that high degree. They, you know, we shouldn't just make it so that we, it's only those kids. Because actually, to me, that's discrimination. And I also think that once you get a kid in the program, just like when you get a kid in high school, your goal is to have everyone in that class, in that cohort, to graduate. Once you put a kid in one of these choice programs, it should, we should not be trying to kick them out because they don't have the grade that you all say that they have. You need to keep them in the program. You need to work with them and do whatever it is to keep them in there. Because especially when you have a kid that's coming in the ninth grade, you know, good and well, they're trying to get acclimated to high school. So at least you give them the opportunity to try and stay in the program.
Right.
But I do applaud everything that you all are trying to do for us. And when we put that new building up at North Clayton High School, all of that stuff that you have at Morrow High School, that robot y'all got walking around there now that we just getting ready to approve tonight, that $350,000 simulator. We want the same thing on the north side, just like we got on the east side.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we want to be moving on up, just like, right.
Yes, ma'am. We've already talked about the equipment at North Clayton High School. But if you do not mind, I do want to remind the board members that when we wrote the grant for MSAP and I presented the grant that we were just awarded in October, it took two years, so you may not recall. We discussed then that Morrow High School was going to transition to a school-wide program and they were not going to use academic criteria or GPA as, and, as a requirement to enroll. And just so you know, Drew High School, North Clayton, and the IB programs will not use a GPA for enrollment that was decided this summer.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise I might need to sign up for public comment.
No, we don't want that, Ms. Goree.
Dr., Mrs. Strick said, I already get it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wiley.
Members of the board, we hear you. We hear you. And we are making changes. They are slowly, but they are occurring. So just be mindful that we are listening to your concerns and we are addressing those concerns as fast as we can. And so the last part that I have are the GMAS results preliminary. Please review your executive summary and click on the link. And that's how I will conclude that conversation until July, oh, well, August now, is when I will give you a full presentation when the data are no longer embargoed. So please just look at your executive summary. Appreciate that. Well, that concludes my presentation. And I'm sure there are some questions that you would like to ask me. But before you do, I know we are to vote. You are to vote on the I policies. There's one thing that I would request that you do is to pull the IBB policy, the IBB Policy Charter School. In just listening to some of the concerns you have, I want to give a, go back and have a chance to review that policy and to make sure it is aligned to your expectations. So I'm asking you to pull that policy, IBB, so that I can have a chance to go back through it and make sure it aligns to your concerns and, and, and in alignment to the state law as well. Okay? I appreciate that.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because I've already made a decision that we're not voting on the, our policies. And I'm, we're thinking the same because that's what I had, IBB. We need a better calendar than what, than what, yeah, you all kind of need to go back to the drawing board on that one. And we want some, we want it to be fair. If you send a letter, if somebody gives you a, a petition in February and you all haven't said, well, this is what's wrong with it and you haven't given them the opportunity to remediate it, then we have an issue. And also, we would like for, you know, everybody to understand that don't send letters stating a position until it comes before the board. I think we make that decision. Once we make the decision, then send letters out. Otherwise, please don't do that. That's not a good practice.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? You received a document this weekend from me. Are, are there any questions?
Yeah, board members, we, I requested that we get an explanation for how teaching and learning is operating. And everyone received the document. I think we, we had, I think Ms. Hill, did you, did you get a copy today?
I sent it to you.
I think she emailed it to you and, and Mr. Christmas. But I see Ms. Baker's light on.
I just wanted to take a chance to just say thank you for the, the document you gave us this weekend that stated who was in your department and what they did. And as long as I've been on the board, I don't think I've ever received anything like that. And I just want to say thank you. I know it took you a few minutes to get it done. And again, just thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yeah, she did a great job, Dr. Young. I won't even ask you any questions about it.
Thank you so much.
You got an A-plus on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I, I do want to mention, Ms. Baker, I believe was you who asked about the K-12 designation. If you all recall, some years ago, all of our coordinators were K-12. And so some wisdom came about and we made a K-5 math coordinator and a 612 math coordinator. Same thing for language arts. And so we look forward to doing that for our science and social studies as those are our academic core content areas, but also our tested areas. Because we want to give our students and our school the supports that they need to be successful. And so I, as Dr. Smith comes to you and asks for those positions to be approved, I hope that you approve those two positions. Thank you very much. That's good for my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Those are the updates for the board. Next on the agenda, Mr. Consigliere, if we can have Mrs. Ramona Bibbins.
Good eve, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community. This evening, I will be presenting the May financial report. The monthly preliminary financial statements are provided to the Board of Education to include the statement of revenues and expenses and the general fund balance report. The statement of revenues and expenses include the annual budget along with the monthly and year-to-date budget compared to actuals for the month and year-to-date. For the, as of May 31st, 2023, we have collected 89.8% of our total revenue. We have budgeted $548,350,647. And year-to-date, we've collected $492,571,563. Of that, that's made up of our local property taxes. We've collected 101% of what we budgeted. We've collected 162% of our other local revenue, 82.4% of our QBE state revenue. We have one more month to collect for June. We do collect that from July 1st through June 30th each year. And then our federal revenue is at 69.3%. On the expenditure side, our budget, budgeted expenditures are the same as our revenues. We've spent 85.3% of our budgeted expenditures. So we're trending below our revenues. So based on that, our ending fund balance on May 31st is $199,250,141. Do you have any questions regarding the financial, that report?
No.
The next report is for our SPOS revenue. So the SPOS, which is our special purpose local option sales tax, it provides the primary source of funding for the school district for all of our capital needs. This is the sixth SPOS program approved by the voter referendum. And this report, the report that's included in your packet shows the monthly cumulative and average collections to date generated from this tax. However, this slide that we have here shows our collections for March, April and May for this year, 2023, compared to 2022. And as you can see, collections have been up. They were slightly down, though, for the month of May, but not anything for us to be concerned about. So any questions on the SPOS report?
Do we have any questions? I don't see any.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
And the final is the purchasing report. According to Board Policy DJEAA, the purchase of any non-consumable item with a value of $50,000 or more and the purchase of a group of non-consumable items from a single vendor or individual, on, on individual or sequential purchase orders with a total value of $50,000 or more shall be approved by the Board of Education prior to purchase and/or prior to the execution of any agreement to purchase. The policy also requires that at the regular monthly Board of Education meeting, the superintendent or designated will provide a report of all purchases greater than $10,000, which were approved during the prior month and not previously approved by the board. The purchasing department has included in the executive summary a detailed account of all purchases and contracts with a value exceeding $50,000 that require board approval. And also, we have provided spreadsheet reports for Report A, which is consumable purchases made with a value of $10,000 or more. Do you have any questions on those from that spreadsheet?
Uh, you have the contracts. Have you discussed it? Have you mentioned it?
No, ma'am, not yet.
Okay, well, I am gonna, we did notice something on the, on your purchasing report, though.
Was it on the report B or C?
B. Which, yeah, we, we noticed that, I'm not even gonna call that school's name. But we noticed that we have some people that it seemed like you all were trying to, you know, kind of slide. you know, kind of slide something under our noses. But we do note when people have multiple purchases, you know, you you do them in little small amounts because you know that you need board approval for $50,000. We would like for that not to happen again.
Yes, ma'am.
We saw a lot of purchases, and we found out that, you know, y'all sent it. You know, you you ordered on June the 3rd, then you ordered on June the 4th, then you ordered on June the 5th. Now, if you just put them all together, it would, you know, you would have had to come to us. But we're not, we look at stuff. So we we don't want that to happen again. So if you could let the let these high schools and some of these schools know that we are looking.
Yes, ma'am, I will definitely. And I'll also have staff to start monitoring those closer to make sure if they see something coming in, the same vendor for those, for any of the, anyone that's ordering to, as a red flag, we need to stop and look at that to make sure it doesn't exceed that threshold.
Okay.
All right, so Report B is for non-consumable purchases made with a value of $10,000 or more but less than $50,000. And I think that's the report that you saw that on. Okay, any other questions on that one?
Mr. Christmas?
Uh, yeah. With his Apple Incorporated, we purchased for different schools. Would it make more sense to just purchase it as a whole than to buy it, buy different schools and then disperse it here? Would we get more more for our money?
That is an option. If they're purchasing the same items, we probably should be doing an RFP or a bid for those items and have one contract that everyone can purchase off of. We would get better pricing if we did that. But Ms. Brewer could better address that if that's something that has not happened.
Yes, on the Apple contracts, we get special pricing for schools. So it's already a negotiated contract, and we do receive discounted prices for for those Apple products.
It it's already discounted?
Yes.
We just buy it by school, is that?
No, we up, we buy from a special division of Apple, which is a K-12 education division. So our prices are different from the normal Apple computers. So we already receive a discount built in. And some of their products have features for schools that are not on regular Apple products.
Thanks.
So as, in in follow-up on Mr. Christmas's question, wouldn't it just make better sense to just, instead of trying to get around the 50? We don't have a problem if you have something over $50,000 to just go ahead and tell those schools to just go ahead and just purchase it, and and it's, it won't be a problem, instead of trying to do it in little little bits. Because like, you know, one school, we just saw the same thing over. And you know, we discussed it this morning, so.
We did discuss it earlier, Ms. Corrie, and we do send out notices when we notice that there's attempt to violate purchasing policies, and we do monitor for that. But sometimes at different schools and the same personnel, it's not like a report that flashes up in news. But we do see it when we do the cumulative report weekly or monthly, and then we address those issues with those departments and schools.
Okay.
Any other questions on the B report? Okay, the last is the report C is non-consumable items with a value of $50,000 or more that require board approval as detailed in the executive summary. Also, I wanted to call to your attention, though, we did have two supplemental reports that, so you are aware of those that would be on this. Okay. So I won't go into details on those then.
Right, well, we, you know, we, in the event that some of the other people, we know that we need to replace the turf at at the stadiums. We don't have a problem with that. That's what I'm saying. We don't have a problem with this. We just need to know, we don't have to just, you know, do that. Because now I'm gonna say this, this last report, $152,000, one school, Marlboro High School. We have, we do have 12 high schools, and I would like to see in the reports some other schools getting some something other than Marlboro High School. And I voted for the school. Everything y'all said, everything y'all get, I didn't put my hand up, I put my hand up. But, you know, we got Lovejoy, we got Mondays Mill, North Clayton, all of those. I want to see, I just need to see some equity. Because by now, I would think that we should have everything in Marlboro High School. After all the money we've spent, and you know, there's money that we're, that comes out of SPOS funds. I know that a lot of that money that was spent is CTAE. But, and I know we had a grant, and I know we had to spend it. That's why I'm saying, instead of just trying to chop it up, just go ahead and, you know, just order and say, hey, you know, we need an exception to the rule because we have this grant and we're trying to spend it. So, you know.
Well, Madam Chair, the board can consider raising the threshold higher than what it is to be in line like other districts, but we'll have that conversation later.
Well, we probably won't do that now. Because, because, because we know, we know what happened when we raised the threshold. I don't think you're gonna get a raise on the threshold because we we still look, we look at our money. We just want to let you all know, we do look at it.
And and also, Madam Chair, you know that we've done presentations centering around SPOS, and the North Clayton community will be getting tons of stuff.
Well, we, that's what you say, but, you know, when we see it, that's when we gonna believe it. But we just want equal treatment in the North, South, East and West.
Yes, ma'am. And one final thing, on the turf replacement, the $1,260,000, that is, those are SPOS projects.
Right.
However, because of how those SPOS funds come in, they will be, SPOS will be borrowing that money from the general operating fund and would be paying it back. So I just want to make sure that is on record.
Yes, we know that.
Okay.
And but, other than that, I just need to get on my soapbox one more time. This is for the teaching and learning department. I saw all those contracts for this, 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 that. I don't know how many years I've been begging. Can somebody go to the Orton-Gillenham training? I didn't see one thing on for Orton-Gillenham. I'm, you know, last year, y'all got up here and promised me, oh, yeah, we got, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. I'm still waiting for somebody to go to Orton-Gillenham training. I ran into one of our parents this summer whose child had IEP. He is actually going to to the chiropractic school to become a doctor. He had IEP. She swears by Orton-Gillenham. Everybody knows what Orton-Gillenham does, but I don't know what it is. I don't know if we allergic to Orton-Gillenham in Clayton County, but I need to see that on the on the sheet the next time. Now, I'm gonna get down off my soapbox, and I'm done. I think, I think I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Joseph? Don't be intimidated, Mr. Joseph.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith. You have received the SPOS construction update for the month of June. We had two payments totaling $309,000. There were no change orders, and this concludes the report. Are there any questions about the report or ongoing projects?
Do we have any questions? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking in your construction report, and I've been looking on there for some time at the roof for the maintenance department. And I just would like to know, when are you all going to put the roof on the maintenance department? Because I know it's, it's, it's been needed. So are you all anywhere near?
We are. We're wrapping up design. We just had a meeting with the city of Johnsboro for the permitting process. So as you know, we're using a different procurement process with the CMT Risk. So a lot of this work is happening behind the scenes. So within, by September, you will see those, those next round of projects to include the roof for the warehouse building.
Okay, and I want to commend you, Mr. Joseph. We, for those that aren't aware, we did have the groundbreaking ceremony for Forest Park Middle School last week. And for those that couldn't come, we did leave you a, it should be a hard hat by your, on the day is for you. So that was a very nice groundbreaking ceremony. We can't wait to see Forest Park Middle School. And and then you did one other thing about, I would like to know who has been involved with the design for North Clayton High School other than the architect?
So the first, we, we, design is ongoing. So we are working on the conceptual phase. So during that phase, it's the construction department working with the architect to present concepts for recommendation to the superintendent. Once we have finalized at that point, we'll bring the presentations to the board for input. Once we get into construction documents, we'll work with all of operations to include maintenance, nutrition, technology. We'll work with the principal and the administration team. Again, this will be about an eight-month process. But right now, we're just in the Phase 1 as we're dealing with land acquisition. Some more to come in that in that regard.
All right, I think we we would like to have a little input from the community as well. So if you can indulge us, I'm talking about before you do all of that. Because we don't want to come in after you already drew the plan, get some input for some of the things that the community would like, if you all don't mind. All right, thank you. Mr. Solbret?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, colleagues and community members. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of May 12 through June 8, 2023. All HR updates were submitted to the board for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions regarding the Personnel Changes Report? Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question with the the resignations versus the new hires. Does that put us back in the same situation numerically with the positions that will be filled August 2nd?
So we're actually ahead of schedule when we compare where we are at this time last year to where we are this time this year. At submission time to the board, there were 448 teacher vacancies. And as of June 22nd, that number is at 375. At this time last year, we were at 504. Thank you so much.
All right. Did someone else ever? I I wanted to ask a question regarding the transfer portal. I sent you all an email regarding the fact that you all have a transfer portal that is in March, and it's only from March the 7th through the 10th. That doesn't make sense to me because I think if you're going to allow people the opportunity to transfer, I think they need to apply for transfer. But the March the 7th through the 10th, most people are not going to say that they're not gonna be at a job. And I'm wondering, do you all plan to allow employees to transfer? Because once we get all of these resignations, like now is a good time for people to be given the opportunity to transfer. Now, I know you all are gonna say this to me. Well, we don't want to give them the opportunity now because that creates a vacancy at another school. But you know what? You lose people sometimes because they want to transfer. And in March, there was no opportunity to to transfer, so they've already quit. And maybe some of those people that didn't, that resigned would have stayed had they been given the opportunity to transfer when they know there's a vacancy at another time. And I don't even know, when did we even go back to this? Because when I worked in the school district, that was not the way our transfer policy was.
So a couple of things. We are addressing the specific situation that you emailed us about. But in general, there is a finite window for the educator who's interested in transferring to essentially court other locations and for the locations to court them. So this year, we actually provided a list of all of the vacancy to those who were deemed eligible to transfer. In addition to that, we provided a list to every administrator of those that were eligible. So not only was the educator able to reach out to schools who had vacancies in their areas, the principals actually had a, an exhaustive list of each educator that was deemed eligible in addition to those areas of certification. So they knew who wanted to transfer, who was eligible to transfer, and the type position for which they could absorb them potentially at their location. This year, we also went back to the face-to-face transfer fair. So you were able to reach out to principals, principals could reach out to you, and then you could also attend a transfer fair where you had the opportunity to engage face-to-face with the administrators that have vacancies. You are correct that we do give vacancies after that transfer period. But the reason we don't wholesale transfers again is because we are attempting to support the locations and stabilizing. If I'm an educator that resigns because I'm under the impression that I'm gonna find something somewhere else, as long as I resign in good standing, I am eligible for rehire.
Right, but see, last year, you all created some new positions for classified people. But those classified people wanted to try to, like you had those media, but you wouldn't let the classified people transfer because you said the only way they can transfer is if they get a promotion.
And so we did remedy that situation. So this year, in the transfer documentation, educators were asked to at least petition to determine if they would be eligible. And if a new job class was created, as long as you had been deemed eligible for transfer, even if you didn't find something at that point, you would be able to transfer if a new job class was created. And that modification was developed based on that situation that you just outlined.
Okay, well, then that's a good thing. Because when are, when do you do do final evaluations?
Final evaluations, in May.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. By May, you, somebody might be fired at a school, you know, where you might want to go to. But because we just limit it to those three or four days, you know, that they don't have, have the opportunity. But, okay, that sounds like you'll be able to rectify. Are there any other questions? All right, I think at this point, we have completed the consent agenda. And since this is a dual meeting, we do need to vote on accepting the reports that have been presented to us. So at this time, I need a motion to present the consent agenda, which includes the financial report, the SPOS revenue report, the purchasing report, the SPOS construction report, and the Personnel Changes Report. Ms. Baker?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda for approval as it has been presented.
All right, Ms. Bowles?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Please vote. All right, it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda are the policy series. I and and Dr. Young just asked us to remove IBB. We're not voting on this tonight because, number one, it's the, it's the second read. And since they need to go back to the drawing board on that, the that policy IBB on that charter situation, we need them to to rewrite it, submit it to us, and then we'll look at any other changes. So we're not voting on that. We will vote on the next policy, which is policy BBBE. If you'll notice that the supporting documents that were given, normally, we do the series in order, but our new superintendent was being nice to us and decided to expedite policy BBBE. And as you can see, there's a recommendation to increase the amount of conference money, which is, I think, at about $3,750 to it is $6,500 for each board member. So we don't, we are, we can waive the the time period for it to go to the public. It's the board anyway, so we don't need necessarily need the input. This is coming from our attorney and the superintendent. So are you prepared to vote? All right, Mr. Striker.
So move, Madam Chair.
All right, I need a second. I believe I see, so Ms. Cooper?
Second.
All right, do we have questions? All right, you have a question, Ms. Williams? Okay, I need you to vote. Are you, okay, it's unanimous. All right, the next item on the agenda. All right, the next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2024 budget. I don't think we need another presentation. Board members, do you need another presentation for the budget? All right, I don't think we need another presentation. So, I will entertain a motion to support the recommended budget for 2024 fiscal year. Mr. Christmas.
Madam Chair, I move that we support the budget for 24, 2024 budget year.
All right, I need a second, Ms. Williams. All right, it's been moved and properly second that we accept the fiscal year 2024 budget as, as presented. All right, the vote is unanimous. All right, we have removed the items B and C. And I want the board members to be reminded that we will have a called board meeting on July the 12th. We're not, the only thing we're discussing is personnel. I know we have some people that will not be able to be here in person, but can be here in, on Zoom. We, I've been told that we have enough for a courtroom. So, those that can attend, we will be here. Everybody else that needs to Zoom in, you will be able to do so. I'm checking, Mr. Striker, have I covered everything?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Let's recall that board members can participate virtually in up to two board meetings per calendar year. So, I just wanted to remind everyone, thank you.
Yeah, I know, we have a situation for a board member that's, because of death, and they'll be all right. And we've covered everything, and I believe that
Yes, we have, Madam Chair.
We are in adjournment, thank you all.